Well, welcome everybody. Happy Thursday to you. MJ Bolt here, host of Unbolted. I've got Christopher Savage again with us. Christopher, thanks for being with us again today.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
You bet. Christopher is running for the Spokane City Council Position or District 3, Position 2, right, Christopher?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, and we had you on a few months ago before the primary, and you successfully made it through the primary, which was awesome. So how goes it? How goes the campaign, Christopher?
The campaign is going really well. We're raising a whole lot of money. We've raised more than the incumbent. We're planning signs out there. We're doorbelling really hard. We're hitting the ground running. And we are hearing a lot of the concerns that our citizens have here in District 3 about public safety being their paramount prime concern. The scattered homelessness that's going across our neighborhoods in our city, as well as the affordability that's out of reach for our gen- my generation, as well as future generations. There is a lot of things that need to be done here to help fix Spokane and restore it to the city that we know. And we need to make sure that we are picking the right candidate. So it's going really well out there. I'm meeting a lot of great people in District 3. That's one of the reasons why I love living here in Spokane. We have so many great individuals that I get to talk to. And it's such a beautiful day out today that it was such a pleasure going out there in the neighborhoods and just walking around and talking with all those citizens there.
That's awesome. And you said you just came in from doorbelling, right?
Yep, that's why I'm wearing this.
That's awesome. Hey, there's nothing like having a candidate that is boots on the ground, a city council person that is, you know, going to put everything out there to engage with the citizens. And that impresses me. That's important to me. You know, when I'm looking for a candidate, it's somebody that is genuinely concerned and wants to hear from people. So, you know, thank you for being there. I know it takes a lot of time and effort. And, uh, you know, it, it, it's a lot of blood, sweat and tears, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. It's been a long couple of months.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Christopher, for people that might not know you yet, tell everybody a little bit about your background. You know, what, what have you been doing? What led you to want to run? Why, why are you running? Why do you want to be the next city council, uh, person in Spokane?
Well, I'm a lifelong resident here of Spokane. I've lived here for about 31 years of my life. And what I've seen our city go from and what it is now, it's really heartbreaking. Our city is a shadow of its former self because of the policies that are coming out of City Hall. And why I'm running is because I don't quit on my home. I'm going to be a defender and a champion for my district and my citizens for the, for the foreseeable future. Because I want to make sure that people know that there's a person fighting for not only their concerns, but having their voice back up on city council. That is one of the biggest things right now. Why I'm running is to return the voice of District 3 to the council. Because right now, our, the incumbent is not doing that right now. When I go down to City Hall and I do my reports and I go to attend every Monday night meetings, it is so disrespectful how he is always on his phone, he's always on his laptop. He won't give anyone the time of day when people are coming down to public testimony. And just like two weeks ago, there's a disabled veteran who came in, amputee, everything, and all he wanted was two minutes of his time at public forum, and he wouldn't even look at him. And that's what I'm trying to do, is make sure that the voice of the citizens isn't being lost in District 3, but it's being restored so that they can have a actual opinion and concerns that are being adequately addressed up on the council, which isn't happening right now. So that's why I'm running. I want to make sure that people have a defender and a champion, that they actually have, and a public servant, not a career politician up there.
Well, and that is so important. And, and too many of our elected officials have become entitled. You know, like you said, our career politicians, it becomes more about them. You know, we need the qualities of a true representative, as you're talking about, in those public and elected positions. Because, you know, stuff is changing so fast, you've got to have, you've got to listen to your constituents. And that is gravely concerning. I mean, I sat on the school board. And, you know, whenever you had public testimony, I mean, I was always making sure to listen in, you know, because people are coming, taking the time, and you are their elected official. So I have not been to the Spokane City Council meetings for a while. I don't live in the city. I know you are attending them all the time and doing amazing reports. So everybody, if you don't follow Christopher, uh, and, and you want to keep, you know, a pulse on what's going on in Spokane City with their policies, whether or not you live in the district or live in the city, follow Christopher Savage. He does an amazing job. You know, I don't know when you started doing this. About a year ago or so, Christopher, you started. I know you've been going to city council meetings for how long?
Uh, ever since 2018, 2019. So I've probably been to over 240 meetings so far.
Wow. And you are there. I mean, I know I talked to so many people that go there, and you are there every single week. I mean, I don't know if you've even missed a week, you know, for sickness or something. You're probably, you probably have a better attendance record than maybe some of the city councilmen, I would imagine.
I actually do. Actually, the incumbent that I'm running against right now, I've been to more meetings than he does, and I'm not paid to go to those meetings. He is.
Wow, that says something. That says something for sure. So yeah, if you are following Christopher, follow Christopher, and he does a great job in, in, you know, relaying what is happening every night. Now, are they still doing it where they're doing public testimony at the end of the meeting? What's going on there? So when was that decision made? I have a feeling your opponent was part of that decision.
Yeah, so they switched that about, I think it was a year and a half ago. It was, it was right after the October 7th resolution. And when that happened, um, in where the city council supported Israel, when that unfortunate event happened over there, uh, it brought in a huge group of young socialists and a socialist group that because of their actions changed the very nature of public forum. It used to be that unlimited number of people could go down there and talk. You had three minutes to speak, and it was at the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end. Now, it's at the end of the meeting, you only have two minutes, and there's only about 20 people who can speak. And if you've already spoken during that month, if there's another person that hasn't, you get bumped off the list. So there is a more restricted, uh, speech downtown or down at City Hall right now that should be lifted, uplifted, or should be removed. Because we need to actually hear the concerns of our citizens. Because when you restrict and don't make it available, the public's concerns and their public testimony, I don't know how you can legislate and represent your district in the best manner possible.
Yeah, typically, I mean, almost every legislative body does public forum before they make decisions. You know, because it's another opportunity to hear from public. Do you guys have like a three-touch rule, you know, or third reading, second reading kind of thing? At all, you know, where they, they make sure that you, that the public is, you know, there's transparency? So it's presented at multiple times? So there's multiple opportunities?
There is another, uh, public testimony that happens. So you can have it at the public, uh, testimony, or you can actually speak on like the consent agenda, or you can speak on the actual, uh, individual items that are on that agenda for that evening. But they do restrict it even further. You used to have three minutes, now you only have two. And they take it where you have the public testimony before the city council. But I find it pretty reprehensible that they're only allowed to speak for two minutes, but the city council members can speak ad nauseam, which they get about two 10-minute times that they can actually speak of what they disagree with or agree with the ordinance or a resolution. And that seems a bit ridiculous, because I would feel like I would want to hear the concerns of the citizens more than my own opinion, because I already know what I'm talking about. And we don't need to postulate up there like what has been going on for the past four years.
Well, and I, you know, there's definitely times when you want to explain why you're voting some way. Uh, or, you know, right before you take a vote, if you're going to take a vote, maybe explain yourself. But yeah, if it's during the time that public should be speaking, I mean, it just, it kind of boggles my mind. And there's many things that boggle my mind about what's happening in the city of Spokane right now and with the city council and with the majority members. But this was something, when they, they made this move last year to move the public testimony, I just thought it was such a blatant disrespect of, you know, citizen voice. And it showed to me, like this, you know, they, they don't have a heart for this. They don't, they don't want to hear from citizens, and that is very concerning.
Yes. That's why they restricted, uh, the comments on their Facebook page, which I find kind of a little bit funny, but also concerning. Because then you can't critique or give comments to those, because now it's just totally censored.
I did not know that. I thought that was actually illegal.
It's supposed to be, but for some reason, they're still allowed to do it. Because I still want, look on their Facebook page, and there's still people complaining like, hey, I can't talk, or I can't give any comments to your official page. So how am I supposed to speak with you if this is the medium of communication that we're using?
So, and this is on, is this on the city, uh, the Spokane City Council as a whole? Or is this on individuals, you know, officials, Spokane City Council members' pages?
I think it's the individual city council members' pages. I still think you're allowed to do the city, uh, like the mayor's office and the city council, but that's about it.
Yeah. We've got a question here from Earl Marr. Earl says, Chris, would you suggest to go back the way it was?
Absolutely. We need more people to talk, and we need to make sure that we're listening to the citizens and not just listening to ourselves. And that's why I would actually go back to even a bigger part where I would want unlimited amount of people that, uh, can sign up. And I would almost increase the amount of time speaking from three to five minutes, because I still remember this when I went to a school board meeting about two or three years ago. And I would find it surprising that you can speak and have a bigger freedom of speech at a school board meeting than at a city council meeting. That blew my mind. So we should bring it up to the standards that the school board has, where you're allowed to speak for about five minutes, unlimited people can talk. And that is why you need to, that's why we need to do this. Because I'm ready to stay there all night and listen to these people, because that is how important it is to listen to the concerns of our citizens, not just going home early so I can go to bed early. I need to stay there so I can listen to the people and come, who come down there and say, this is what's going on in my district, this is what's going on in my neighborhood. Because if we can't do that, then how are we supposed to legislate properly?
Exactly. You have to have a feedback process on how these policies are, are, you know, playing out in the community, and they're not playing out very good. So I have a feeling, you know, there's a lot of people that want to provide feedback that are getting shut off, uh, because of how they're doing this right now. Wow. Um, I know there are a lot of differences between you and your opponent. But this is a, a really good opportunity for you to, I think, you know, clarify on those. Why should people choose you, uh, over your opponent in this race, over Zach Sapon?
One of the major things that I'm going to be doing is restoring public safety downtown with trying to make sure that we get the Prop 1 that was voted into by 75% of the voters two years ago. Because then we'll have an enforcement capability that we can use to make our downtown vibrant, clean and safe. And not only that, but give a tool to our SPD so they can actually enforce properly, rather than be in the state they are right now where they can't really do much because of Zach Sapon's, uh, home warrants, which has been an utter failure and has not been able to address the concerns that was its intention. Um, that is one of my biggest things that I'm better with than the other candidate, as well as I'm going to be there. If I have a different difference of opinion, or I, we may not come see eye to eye with what we're going on with a certain subject matter, I'm still going to meet with you. I'm not going to run away. I'm going to make sure that we can actually have a conversation and dialogue, which is currently not being seen at City Hall right now. Another thing that I'm going to bring that is a major asset is I am fiscally responsible. I'm going to treat the city council like I treat my own household, where if we don't have the money for it, we're not going to pay for it. If we don't have the means to do this, then we're not going to do it. I don't want to give people a false impression or false promises of saying, oh, we can do this. I can write everything. We can do anything. And it's like, well, no, we only have a certain amount of responsibilities that we can do within the city council, and we have to do it responsibly. Because if we don't, then it goes into what we're seeing right now, where we have a $13 million deficit that our city is facing. We need a person up there that is going to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money and not keep writing blank checks because they want to do their own pet projects, like with asphalt art or bike lanes that go to nowhere, that have no actual network that are connecting. I mean, these are the projects that we keep funding and that we keep pushing forward that is putting our city into a multimillion dollar deficit.
Well, and it seems like the priorities are all wonky, because you're not providing public safety, which is the top priority, I believe, of local government, is to provide public safety, right? So like what you're saying, there's, it doesn't seem to be very good prioritization, if there is any. Because there was a, a tax hike, right, recently? So that was, that was passed, so more taxes, and yet now there's still a $13 million shortfall?
Yep. And I'm glad you brought that up, because the community safety proposal that was voted into last year that was approved by the voters, the city did exactly what they said they weren't going to do, where they only spent a little bit amount on to get the NRO officers, which I do appreciate that they helped out with a lot of what's going on in our neighborhoods when it comes to abandoned houses and/or derelict houses and/or treble houses. But rest of the money, I think it was about $4 million, went into backfilling the budget to make sure that they weren't in a, uh, budget shortfall like they were last year. So that's what I don't like, is they took the money that was supposed to be for public safety, and they just put it back into the general budget, uh, general fund to make sure that they weren't actually in a deficit.
Wow. Do you know how much of that money that went towards that? What percentage at all, or?
I think it was about 40 to 50%.
Wow.
Because I think the community safety proposal is only able to, uh, collect or have the revenue that's coming in by, I think it's around six to seven million per year.
My goodness. And so therefore, we keep seeing things get worse and worse on the streets in Spokane. Um, I heard that the Boise, uh, was it a former Boise mayor or the current Boise mayor came up and, and said he couldn't believe the state of the city? And, and was just how far down, you know, we've gone, uh, from what he used to remember? Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. A former Boise mayor came in about a week and a half ago to, uh, come to a certain dinner. He was able to do a presentation, and what happened there was he was just totally surprised by what was being allowed in Spokane. Because Boise had the same problem. They had problems with camping, illegal, sit-in lie, all this kind of stuff that we're dealing with right now. And they were able to reduce all of that within a shortened period of time. And that is what surprised him, is like, why isn't this happening over here? These are simple policies that we have to adopt, like Prop 1 with enforcement of certain places for no camping and sit-in lie, and we're just choosing not to do it. We're choosing to follow Zach Sapon's failed home warrants, which it was supposed to give outreach teams and more time for these people to make sure they're finding the right resources. And what's happened is there's been zero citations within that three months of the home warrants. And there's been zero outreach that has been accepted from these individuals. So clearly, this isn't working, and it made three months of, as you can see, the downtown getting worse, our parks being more occupied by, uh, some of the homeless that need actual help and not just being pushed down the road. We actually need to help these people. And that is what is unfortunate with this, uh, the home warrants that Zach Sapon put out.
Yeah, absolutely. I was talking, I had Chad Wendell on yesterday, who is the executive director of the Hutton Settlement, who, and, and they have, a lot of people don't realize this, they have, uh, 21 properties in the city of Spokane that helps generate revenue for the home to pay, you know, for the services for these kids that they, they house. And he said in one quarter, the, the vandalism and crime and stuff, and, you know, the cost of all that has gone up like 290% from, in one quarter this year. And I just, I mean, I, that was crazy. I, you know, that's astounding. So it shows that whatever is being pushed by the, the majority, Lisa Brown, Zach Sapon and friends, is not working. And why would you reinvent the wheel? I mean, clearly Boise figured it out, right? And isn't that mayor a Democratic mayor, by the way? Isn't he, right? So he figured it out. It's not a Democrat versus Republican thing. Other cities, San Diego, Houston, I mean, these are, these are models that we know that work. So why can't Spokane get their stuff together and, and do what works instead of playing around over here in La La Land? Sorry, but what kind of, where does homeowner, uh, ordinance come from? I mean, what is going on there, Christopher? It just, it seems so out of touch.
Well, in my theory, I, I think it's a way that Zach Sapon was trying to do his own Prop 1, so it looked like he was trying to actually help, and it just doesn't work out. Every one of his, uh, policies has failed, and it hasn't done good for Spokane. And that's what was the interesting part, is they didn't have to change anything from Prop 1. When the State Supreme Court kicked it out, they said, well, the ordinance and the law was actually well done. It was just the process that it went about. So all they had to do, they could actually do that today, if they wanted to, is to enumerate Prop 1 into Spokane municipal code, but they choose not to. So that's how easy this could be, and they just keep kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. So, I mean, and, and that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because I wanted to make sure to hone in on this. Alls they have to do is pass an ordinance, the city council pass, you know, this proposition, and it would be in effect. It could work. It's ready to work, right? It, that's, I mean, there's no reason not to do that.
Yeah, and it's severely affecting our police officers enforcement capabilities. There's been a couple of, uh, police that have come to the neighborhood councils that I regularly attend. And they themselves are saying, we, we need something that is going to help us enforce this law in parks and not just be moving people along. Because as some, several of the SPD officers said specifically, verbatim, we are not the move-along police. So if you call someone, if you call the 911 and say, hey, there's homeless here, and we want you to move along, they're going to be like, we have higher priorities right now. We're 40 to 45 under, uh, police officers understaffed for the SPD, uh, right now. And so they need to prioritize bigger and more important crimes that are happening across town, and they just don't have the time for it, and nor do they have the enforcement capability. They're not just going to go there and try to say, hey, go this way, because it's just going to be a waste of their time.
They want to focus on the street. Yeah. And, and that makes sense. I mean, it's not going to work anyway. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, help correct behavior, and this is not compassion. I think this is the thing that, uh, just makes me so sad, is these people need, you know, help. They need, uh, you know, some guidelines, some barriers, and, um, you know, bye Preston. And they, uh, it's real life here, you know, I got kids and, and coming and going, so. Um, you know, that's not compassion. To, to basically, you know, if, I use the example of a motorist speeding. You know, if they, if they just never enforced, you know, the speeding laws, right? And, and just, you know, kind of yelled at us on the street, but never stopped and gave us a ticket, we'd probably all end up speeding, and we'd all end up hurting ourselves and each other, right? There's a reason why we have laws, but if you, if it's not enforced, that's not compassion. You know, so number one, we're hurting the people that are on the streets because we're enabling them to continue in this hurtful behavior, you know, which is drugs and crime and theft and all sorts of other things, right? You just go down through Spokane, you see it all right there. Plus, it ends up hurting and taking other individual and business, you know, liberties away from other people. I mean, nobody really wants to go down to Spokane right now, because they don't feel safe. Uh, you know, our, our town is becoming more, people are leaving, businesses are leaving. I mean, tell, tell us what you're seeing. You know this way better than I do, Christopher.
We are seeing a very bad point in Spokane's history and now for the downtown. We are at a 32% vacancy rate, meaning that 32% of the buildings downtown are not occupied. And when they're not occupied, that's hurting our sales tax revenue that's leading us to a $13 million deficit. And an interesting economic concept is when we have these, uh, businesses leave, like if it's Carhartt or if it's, um, if it's Nordstrom's, we don't replace that same quality and/or size of company when people decide to come back. It's not, it's going to be a lot smaller. So once these companies leave, it's going to take a lot longer to get those kinds back. And that's really not going to be good for our downtown, because the downtown is our economic engine for the region. If it goes down, the surrounding areas are not going to do well. So we need to make sure that we are occupying downtown with the right businesses so that we can actually get more people to come patronize some of their local shops, like, you know, Boo Radley's or Atticus Finch Coffee Shop. People want to be safe downtown, but we need to make sure that it is safe, because there's a lot of people that just don't want to come downtown anymore. The people that I'm door, doorbelling say it is unsafe. I don't take myself. I'm not taking my parents. I'm not taking my kiddos, because there's been several instances where they go through there, they're either exposed to an unfortunate sight, or they have to walk through either fentanyl smoke or drug use that is being more rampant downtown. And that's why I push back on that. My opponent, he keeps saying that he's banned open drug use downtown. I find that actually really laughable, because you could go at any point at any time during the week, and you could make, and you could prove that wrong with what you see outside. There is clearly not a ban on open drug use downtown. I go downtown almost every day, and I see it constantly.
Yeah. I hear it from business owners. I hear it from people that, you know, go downtown or right in front of their, their, you know, doors of business. I mean, that's a terrible, I mean, nobody, that's terrible for business. So like you said, you know, people are going to start packing up and moving out, and you can't replace that. So that hurts the revenues. That hurts the ability for Spokane to be able to provide services. So now they're going to, you know, be in these short, no wonder they're in these shortfalls, plus bad policy prioritization anyway. It's, it's just a wicked downward spiral without the right people in place and the right policies, you know, decisions being made. So it's critical that we get you in that city council position and help to turn this thing around. Because that changes the, even if, if we can just get you as an addition, then there's other opportunities for other good candidates to get on there that have more conservative values. But now it's, you know, a three, four city council, uh, with you and Cathcart and Bengal. Um, and that's a lot different situation than what it is right now, which is a five-two. Plus, I think that the, this is a Pahone, uh, element is kind of wild too, so.
Yes.
It'd make a big, big difference. So even if you don't live in the city of Spokane, you probably know somebody that does, and this affects you. So Spokane affects all of us in this region. And, you know, I care, I, I'm going through my list. Okay, who do I know that lives in Spokane that I can contact? And everybody, yes, ballots are dropping. You might even have it in the mail today. Christopher, you got yours today?
Yep, got it right here.
All right, so we need.
Already filled it out.
Yeah, but we need you to vote. We need you to vote now. And we need you to contact everyone, to contact 10 people. Get your voting buddies, that you are accountable to them and them to you to make sure they get their ballots turned in. Uh, it's so critical, and, and we see kind of a, you know, falling off of, of the percentage of people voting during these elections, which is really sad, because these affect us the most right here locally, right, Christopher? I mean, how, how has it been out there? Are people pretty motivated to vote in this election?
Um, I'm not particularly sure. I see that there's a lot of want for change. So we'll see if that follows up with an actual vote, but with an off-year election like this is, and it being a city council race, as I would say, it's actually sometimes more important than probably a presidential or governor's race. It isn't as interesting as other years. So we have to really make sure we're getting to the right voters, because there's going to be a small plurality of voters that are actually doing it. That's why in the primary, we only saw about, I think it was 26% participation within District 3. That is really, really low, and I would like it to be higher, but we got to work with what we got. And so that's why we have a good strategy where we're actually making, we have a data set and a list where we're actually going to the people that have been voting in, let's say, the, like, the last, uh, general election, the primary and the special election. Because then it'll show that these people are actually, you know, voting every time, so they're making it our priority. So we need to make sure that we're getting to those voters. I would also like to add that, um, I would advise anyone who's voting right now that you don't mail in your ballots. You take it to a Dropbox that's at a local library or at a public building. Because, uh, right now, there's been some news coming out where some of the mail-in ballots may not even be counted if it's mailed after a certain date. So we want to make sure that people are getting their votes in and they're being counted, and they're not being discounted.
Right, right. And you can follow your ballot at vote.wa.gov, vote.wa.gov. And so you can, uh, if you didn't get a ballot, you can also go there, because I know that happens sometimes too, but just like Christopher's saying, if, you know, if you can avoid using the postal service, please avoid using the postal service. You know, take it to a Dropbox, uh, the libraries, or take it, you know, downtown. Um, either way, that's way better than, than using the postal service. Or, or contact one of us. If, if you just cannot get to a Dropbox and you want, you don't want to use the postal service, like, just give me a call, reach out, or Christopher's team. Uh, any of us would be happy to come and help you, you know, get that ballot delivered. And like I said, you can, you can follow that on vote.wa.gov as well. So, um, let's see here. If you're mobile, here, Brooke McGur says, if your mobile offered to take your neighbor's ballot, and it creates a great convo, that's yes, for sure, right? Yes, I love that. Neighbors helping neighbors. And that's like, you know, the phone tree, like, adopt 10 voting buddies, and then have them adopt 10 voting buddies. And we've got to make sure this was, I think this is typically like a 40%, 45%, uh, uh, you know, in, in these type of elections is the, about the only percent, you know, highest percentage that people vote, and we need way higher than that.
Yes.
And case in point, I believe Zach Sapon got into, uh, the city council on a very narrow margin a few years back. Is that right?
Very soon, only by, yep, you're right, 200 votes.
It's okay.
That shows that your, yeah, vote counts. So if you get yours in, you can decide an election, because sometimes they're within that certain percentage where it's, it's going to matter, and very heavily.
Yeah. So if you hear somebody that's like, oh, I don't, I don't vote, you know, no, you got to get them to vote, because this, it, this matters. And we can change the direction of Spokane, but we need different leadership. We need Christopher Savage and on that dais. We need people like Christopher that are going to listen to the citizens and take it to heart and change the policies and go, this is not working. Which I hear from Christopher. Christopher, anything else that you want to make sure people know about? Uh, what you stand for and how you would serve the citizens of Spokane once elected?
I'm running for Spokane City Council, because I don't quit on my home. I want to make sure that people can see that there's a, a citizen council member out there that is going to represent their interests, bring their voice back up to the dais, and make sure that they're championing and defending all the values and virtues that they hold. I want to make sure that people can see that there is a better choice out there than the incumbent who has done nothing except make our city worse. I'm going to do that for. I'm going to do that for, uh, everyone in District Three because we all belong here in Spokane. I'm going to be your champion. I'm going to be your defender. I'm going to be the public servant that this district deserves and not a career politician where I'm trying to see what is my next play? What is my next stepping stone into gaining more power? That's not me. I want to get in, fix what needs to be done and get out. And that's what you're going to get with my candidacy is you're going to get a citizen council member that is going to represent you better than what is being represented right now.
Yep, absolutely. And I, you know, there's, there's, uh, examples of how much better you're going to be at that because who has shown up at every debate you have, right? How many debates have you been at that Zach has not showed up at?
Uh, there's probably been, I think, two or three.
Wow. You know, and one with this
Well, that we've had.
And one, and one, maybe it wasn't a debate, but it was the Spokane Business Association that you showed up at and you made the pledge, the seventy percent pledge. Tell people about that.
So the seventy percent pledge or the seventy-five percent pledge is to make sure that we are, it's not a, the prop one that was voted into, but it's a similar one that will have enforcement of uh, no camping, no sit and lie within a thousand feet of playgrounds, schools, parks, that kind of stuff. And it would be all across Spokane, making sure that we enumerate this into the Spokane municipal code so it cannot be changed or it can't be thrown out. So that is what is the major changes between Prop One and this one is that it actually puts it into our city charter to make it have a little bit more legitimacy and a lot more weight behind it. And it will actually give more of the enforcement that we need to as well as creating a financial aspect to it so that we don't only have enforcement, but we also have funding that will come following with it so that we can actually address these concerns that are afflicting our city right now.
Yeah. So you took the pledge, uh, 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 council member Bingo also took the pledge. And so did, uh, Alexander, correct? Uh, that's running.
Uh, Alejandro, yes.
Uh, Alejandro. So that is so important. Again, if we can get you and the others in, on city council, then we can change the direction and we can get this taken care of. The other thing I know is you are out there doorbelling. You've been out there doorbelling. That's another big difference. Here I hear that, uh, this bus from Seattle is coming in.
Yes.
Paid operatives, right? Paid doorbellers, uh, from a democratic, a progressive leaning organization that are doorbelling for candidates like Zach Sapon. And I know Mark, uh, Bits out here, uh, as well. I mean, that's craziness. So we've got, what, Seattle coming in to help influence Zach's race? What's that about?
Um, it, to me, I think he's just running scared. I mean, to accept that kind of help without pushing back or even having a conversation with them. I think it shows that he's desperate to try to win and he's going to accept anything that's going to be given to him right now. And the more egregious part about it is this is an assistance that is happening to a campaign. So it baffles my mind how there is no reporting through the PDC or through the campaign that is saying, okay, you're getting this amount of contributions and you're getting this amount of financial help because with all mine assistance, people have actually been seeing it in the news, how I'm getting some support from other different groups. But it is all being reported through the PDC. There's nothing that I'm hiding.
Right.
With my, uh, with my opponent, he has, I mean, this wouldn't have been known unless people were actually pushing back at a local level. So that's where I kind of find it odd that this wasn't being reported or it wasn't being shown more because to me, I feel like it should be an independent expenditure that should be reported on the campaign showing, hey, we are giving you assistance because they are, they're bussing in a lot of people to doorbell, to do lit drops. And it's not just that it's free, like they're coming over out of the goodness of their heart. They're getting paid and they're being organized. So why isn't this being reported?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's very concerning. So if we have an elected official that is not about transparency and is not, you know, putting forth and being transparent with the contributions, like you're saying, that should be on the PDC website. Right? It should be there for everybody to see. Here's the organization that's doing that. If that's not being done, I mean, that tells you the character of these people.
Yes. And I find it laughable that, uh, Zach, uh, my challenger Zach's opponent equates a bus full of people to Chud Wendell. I, I, I'm not understanding how he thinks that's the same.
Chad shared that with me. Yeah, Chad, Chad is the executive director of the Hutton Settlement. Who own, they own twenty-one properties in Spokane. And yeah, it's, it's not even close.
Yeah, it's really laughable.
Oh my gosh. We've got a couple other comments here. I wanted to share. Thank you, MJ, for hosting and sharing all these important interviews. And thank you, Christopher, for taking this on and fighting and helping to save Spokane for generations to come. That's, uh, Vanessa Childers Pew. And then, um, let's see here, we've got a couple more. Uh, I didn't read this one ahead of time. I felt like Zach didn't think he was going to have any competition and he was caught sleeping, which goes to show his character. He's lazy. Thanks, Rook. Well, you know, something's going on. I don't know what, but, uh, it's sure telling to me and I hope everyone else can see it as well. So um, Christopher, where can people go to find you, support you? You know, if they've got questions for you, how do they, how do they connect with you?
Yeah. So I have several social media accounts that you can go to, just search Christopher Savage and we have two Facebook accounts. We have a Twitter and we have a LinkedIn. I would also recommend if people want to donate electronically to the campaign, all they have to do is go to savageforspokane.com and that's savage F O R, uh, spokane.com. And if people want to contact me directly, this is what I'm doing on all my palm cards and all the information I give out. I'm giving out my personal phone number because I want to listen to you. I need to hear from you because I need to go up there with the concerns of our citizens rather than my own personal agenda. So here's my phone number. It is five zero nine five nine nine one nine zero three. Again, that's five zero nine five nine nine one nine zero three, because I want to hear from as many people as possible. I want to be accessible to show people that there is an actual council member, a citizen council member out there that is willing to do the hard work that my incumbent is willing to do.
Yep, absolutely. Christopher, blessings to you. I'm doing whatever I can to help you, uh, from Spokane Valley. You know, friends, share this podcast with your friends and neighbors. Share it with the people that are voting in Spokane, you know, share this link. I know, uh, Christopher has got great content. Go on his website, go on his social media where he shares the city council reports. Check those out. Make sure people vote. Ballots are dropping right now. We've got, you know, three and a half weeks to get them turned in. Don't let them get stuck in a pile that you're going to forget, right? And that, they count on you doing that. There's been research done that, you know, eighteen days is the magic number that you, you tend to forget. So don't let that happen, right? Get your ballot, vote and get it put in those drop boxes. And vote for Christopher Savage along with our other recommended candidates. If you, if you need, you know, direction or you want to, uh, find out about other candidates that you don't know about who you should vote, go to Spokane GOP dot com. We've got our recommended vetted candidates there. I also know, we believe we vote just came out with their, um, rating system where they vetted candidates as well and it's just so important that you vote in these local races. So Christopher, thanks for taking time again today. I know you're busy. I know you're out there doing every last little bit, no stone unturned, right? This time to close the deal. So, uh, and, and donate to Christopher. He's still got a lot of things he wants to do. I know you said you're doing some TV ads and some mailers, uh, right now. So every dollar helps right now to help get, close the deal on this, right?
Yes, absolutely. We need to make sure that we have a big war chest. So we're pushing back on all the propaganda that my opponent is putting out there.
Propaganda and lies, I think, is more like. All right, Christopher. Thank you so much for your time. Blessings, friend. And, uh, we're, we're, we're going to be looking forward to hearing a couple of weeks.
Well, thank you, MJ. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and being able to get my platform out there for other people to see.
You betcha. You betcha. Take care. Bye, everyone.